Good morning and welcome to the Minnehaha County City of Del Rapids Joint Meeting. If you'd stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Again, welcome and especially to the City of Del Rapids City Council. We're glad you're here, Justin. I think you said you do have a quorum here this morning, so we're in good shape with that. Remind people to silence their cell phones if they would, please. And if you need meeting documents, they're available in that white binder on the corner. If you need a listening device, Carol can help you with that. With that, we'll go to item number one on the joint agenda, and that's a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Do we need the same motion from the city, please? And you'll have to give us your name, because I, most of us recognize names and faces, but I can't remember everybody.
Gary Hall, motion approved.
Thank you, Gary. Is there a second?
James Borcher, second.
Thanks, James. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. The second item on the agenda is to consider a motion to approve or deny a request to vacate highway portion of the 66-foot dedicated road beginning on the north edge of 246th Street, also known as South Dakota State Highway 115. The roadway is lying between Lot 1 of Overveg, I'm sorry, Track 2 and Overveg Track 8, including Lot 1 and Lots 1 and 2, a busker route subdivision of Overveg. Is that, that's not right, is it?
Overvog.
Overvog. No, it didn't sound right, sorry. Overvog Track 2 and extends to the northeast corner of Lot 1 of Busker's subdivision of Overvog Track 7 and northwest corner of Overvog Track 8, including Lot 1, all in the southwest corner of Section 8, T-10-4, N-R49 West, Minnehaha County. There's going to be a test on this when we're done.[181.12][181.12](laughing) Good morning.
Good morning. David Heinold, County Planning Department. What we have for us, a public hearing to consider a request for a road vacation, which is approximately a quarter mile west of Del Rapids along 115. So the property, so right here to the south, you've got 115, and then, so the subject, the request right here is, goes straight north from 115 along here in the area that's shaded in red. And all of the properties that are situated along this or lying adjacent to the property all have access to either 473rd, which is just, just beyond this portion of the roadway that's the request, and as well as, if you extend to the north, you have Golf View Drive, which, as you continue around the corner, there's also another driveway. This is also the other, the northernmost access point that is part of the public right-of-way, but it serves as a driveway to get to one of the interior lots back here, which also has access to 473rd, direct access. This, this portion right here, there's no, everybody has access to a road, either Highway 115, 473rd, or Golf View Drive. And in addition to the southern property, which is, the applicant also has access to 473rd through an easement across the property to, directly to the west of this. So this, if the, the vacation is approved, then this portion that's highlighted in red, the 66-foot right-of-way that hasn't been developed, and I'll go through some pictures, or just a picture that I took. This has been dedicated as a right-of-way, which would eliminate the, a front yard setback for each of the properties, because there would be no longer a roadway there. So each property owner would get 33 feet split down the middle, according, or going east and west of that road, just drawing a line straight down the middle of that line. Notice of this meeting was scheduled on July 11th, for, as in accordance with South Dakota Codeified Law. So staff finds that the public would be better served by the proposed right-of-way vacation and recommends approval of road vacation, 1702. So the county commission and city council, action should be taken to approve and deny the, or deny the request to vacate the 66-foot dedicated roadway as described in the resolution as attached. And just a picture of that, just looking straight north from Highway 115, the undeveloped portion, as you can see, there's developed on both sides with residential housing. And then this is looking south on that driveway, public road access there, looking off to the right of that image as you would continue on towards the, that right-of-way, that red area. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Does the City of Del Rapids have any questions for planning and zoning at this point? Do, commissioning?
That long driveway on the north side there, is that a permanent easement? You keep saying it's a public access, public dri, or private driveway. How does, what's the legal process on, on that, or what, what is that, I guess?
Well, the plat shows that it's a 66-foot right-of-way.
The driveway that goes to that property that's tucked up in the?
Yeah, to the, to the property. So as you continue on east of the red shaded area, it becomes a driveway, because it's their prop, it's the property owner's property.
Okay, so the driveway begins at the tip of the red shaded area, but up until that point, it's a public street?
It's dedicated as a public right-of-way.
Okay.
On the plat.
Okay. Okay.
Same as the red shaded area, it's the same.
And there's no way that any of these properties will be subdivided? These are large properties, there's no intent of anybody to subdivide them in the future?
No, all of the properties in this, the rural residential five, which we call it, is, there's a minimum of five acres, they have to have four, and all of them are at five acres. So they, they would have to go through an additional process, rezone, and it'd have to go before this body.
I guess it begs the question, why was this public right-of-way put in to begin with?
Future, future access for subdivision, and now that you have the highway there, you have additional access points. There's opportunity to provide access for their, the development.
If they wanted to subdivide?
If they wanted to.
Okay.
Pursue that.
We're, we're beyond that now, is what you're saying. There's no potential for anybody wanting to subdivide, and there's no need for this road moving ahead, then?
Yeah, and, and that would be a future discussion that would be had, if, if it's potential for municipal annexation or anything like that, or sanitary sewer.
I'm done. Commissioner Hyburger?
I just wondered if it'd be a little helpful, David, if you'd pull up that map that shows the different tracks, that's a drawn map instead of that, it shows the layout of the subdivision a little bit better. Do you have that one?
I think we do.
It just shows that the original, I assume that was the original plat that was laid out. It just shows the streets a little bit better.
Yeah. And so that shows the unnamed roadway, which is also the 66-foot dedicated right-of-way that's that red shaded area.
I didn't have a comment. I mean, I just had a comment.
Anyone else have any questions for David?
If you don't mind, I have one more.
Sure.
Who decides to put that unnamed roadway in to begin with? Was that the developer, or was that at the request of the county?
That's when it was plotted.
So it was plotted with that, but, so the developer asked for it?
So ultimately, that was approved by the planning commission.
Okay. At the request of the commission, or at the request of the developer to put a road in?
I'd have to, to look into that. I haven't.
I didn't know if there's a procedure, if there's a?
Yeah, so it went through the planning commission.
Okay.
Anyone from the city have any comments? Or is a petitioner or a representative of the petition here today? Do you have any comments you'd like to make? You'd need to come up, sir, to the microphone and identify yourself, and we need your address too, please.
My name is Daniel Witty. I'm the, I submitted this. I own the Lot 1 of Track 2.
Daniel, can you give us your address, please?
Oh, 1303 Clark Avenue, Del Rapids, sorry.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
I talked to all the adjoining landowners of this unnamed roadway, and they all were in agreement to vacate it. I have Bill Klein just to the north of me, then it's Mitch Ryberg, number two. Number one is Mitch Ryberg, and then the Overveg Track 8 was Russ Nelson. We all felt in agreement that it, you know, and the state is not putting, on South Dakota Highway 115, they're getting rid of the approach for that unnamed roadway. They're not, they're redoing that highway, and they're not going to put that approach in. So we just thought for the safety and, you know, for just the simplicity, it'd be the easiest just to get rid of that, I guess, so.
Any questions for Daniel? Anyone from the city have any questions for him? I'm sure you've heard this before, multiple times, probably. Since the city really has, I think, priority in this conversation, even though we both need to either approve or deny, I think I would entertain a motion from the city first.
Mark Chris, motion to approve.
Thank you, Mark.
Very good. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second from the city to approve. Is there a motion from the county commission?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to also approve. Do we need a roll call to vote on this, do we, since we have a quorum? Just to be safe, should we do a roll call?
Roll call.
I think we will do a roll call, just to be safe, if that's all right. We have a motion from the city council of Del Rapids to approve. Mark, do you want to start?
Yep. Mark Chris, yes.
Bill Schmidt, yes.
Barry Bird, yes.
James Borcher, yes.
Michael Garrett, yes.
Gary Hall, yes.
Okay. We have a motion that's been approved by the Del Rapids City Council. We have a motion and a second from the county commission to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes from the city and the county. Daniel, you have your project ahead of you. Thank you all for coming this morning. We also have on the agenda, any old business, if you have any old business as a joint commission. Justin, do you have any old business, any new business? If not, then the joint meeting of the commission and the council is adjourned, and we'll go into the Minnehaha County Commission agenda. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. Appreciate it. Yeah, I guess we legally need a motion to adjourn as you walk out.
Bill Schmidt, motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second, I give you a line.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Mr. Chairman, do we need one to, a motion to adjourn the joint meeting with Del Rapids?
Second.
Can we walk out after ours?[864.31][864.31](laughing) A motion to adjourn the joint meeting, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Now we're to the county commission agenda, looking for a motion to consider to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item two is to approve the minutes of July 25th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the July 25th county commission minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Second item is to approve the amendments of the joint Sioux Falls City Council and the county commission minutes.
Make that motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion unanimously passes. Bills to be paid of $353,214.58.
Pay him with a comment, please.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second, and comments, Commissioner Hyburger?
I just wanted to comment that under the Public Defender's Office, there was a bill for a mental health psychological examination for $8,500. I did ask on that, it was on a homicide case. This is something that, you know, the state is trying to work on. Obviously, it's an issue. In this particular case, I don't know that it, we could have decreased that cost because of the type of evaluation it was, but I just want to make note to the public that those evaluations are out there and they're expensive.
Thank you. Commissioner Barth?
I'd also comment on a couple bills there. It includes 57,000 for XL Energy, which air conditioning is costing us all more these days. And we have $26,000 that went to the ambulances. Garrettson and Humboldt each got 12 and a half thousand, and Jasper got their 1,000.
Any other comments? Not? We have a motion and a second to approve the bills. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item four are reports of the county coroner for June 2017 and for the second quarter of the year. Item five is personnel action. The first item is to consider a motion to approve routine personnel action.
Motion to approve routine action?
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the routine personnel actions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item B is to recognize the significant employee anniversaries. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. I have a relatively long list of anniversaries for you today. We have Derek Goldbrunson in the sheriff's office, Dennis Wojahowski and Lindsay DeMatteo all celebrating five years of service, and Dennis is with JDC, and Lindsay's with the Public Advocates Office. We have Robert Olson, Wyatt Walton, and Ben Boxa, all COs with the GEL, celebrating 10 years of service. Rod Han with the Highway, celebrating 15. And Deb Johnson with Planning, and Gigi Iosty, celebrating 30. And you see, we have Gigi here, and as much as I tried to convince her to come to the podium, I was unable, but.[1068.81][1068.81](laughing) Deb's in the back, too. Deb's in the back, too. Yeah.
You want to come up and say?
Come on, come up and stand.
I'm not very convincing.
You know, for as long as some of these people have been here, nobody ever wants to come to the microphone.
It's rare.
Yeah. Well, thank you for your years of service. You guys are all obviously wonderful employees, and we appreciate your dedication and commitment. And I've been here for six years, and rarely do I ever get complaints from people about staff, and that's pretty unusual, so thank you for your service.
And in 30 years, you'll have as many as they do.
There's no chance I'll be doing that.[1112.31][1112.31](laughing) Now, if you want to talk about complaints about commissioners, Barth is at the head of that list.[1119.23][1119.23](laughing) Anyway, no, I'm kidding.
I can take it.
We also have volunteers who are a huge support to the county, and if you have a significant number of those, too.
292, again. This is, I don't know how many months in a row that we're near 300. It's amazing.
That's, that's amazing. That's awesome. I don't know how many additional employees that would mean to us, because I don't know how many hours exactly it is, but that's significant contributions also, so thank you to those individuals.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's no applications today for abatement, no notices and requests. Item eight is the first reading of, and authorization for the county auditor to publish a notice of a public hearing on an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County, which could be held on August 22nd at 9:00 a.m. at the county commission office. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning, Scott Anderson, County Planning. And today I'm asking for approval to authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice on October 22nd at 9:00 a.m. in this room. It's a rezoning request to rezone approximately 80 acres to the Eagle Ridge Crossing Plan Development, which is a mixed-use development. This is about six miles west of Sioux Falls at the junction of, what is 41st Street and what commonly called the Wall Lake Oil, so it's about a mile south of Wall Lake. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. I've prepared the hearing notice, provided it to the auditor, so it's ready to go.
Any questions for Scott? Is there a motion to approve the first reading?
Motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the first reading and publish the notice of that hearing on August 22nd at 9:00 a.m. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item B is a first reading, an authorization for the auditor to publish a notice of a public hearing on amendment to the 2002 revised zoning ordinance for the Minnehaha County and the City of Sioux Falls for August 22nd at 5:00 p.m. at a joint meeting at the Sioux Falls Council and Minnehaha County Commission.
Once again, Scott Anderson, you're going to be busy that day, because this is setting a hearing date for the same date, but at 5:00 p.m., so August 22nd, at 5:00 p.m. at Carnegie Town Hall. This is a zoning, rezoning request to rezone approximately seven acres from A1 agriculture to C commercial. It's located approximately half a mile south of the Renner Corner on South Dakota Highway 115. It's the location of Grace Baptist Church. They are requesting to rezone their entire seven acres from A1 agriculture to C commercial. This has gone to the planning commission. I provided you the minutes, they recommended approval. I'm asking to authorize the auditor to publish the hearing notice for that meeting on August 22nd at 5:00 p.m. I provided the hearing notice to the auditor office, the auditor's office, so it's ready to go, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Hyburger?
Scott, if there's already a building on there and it isn't agricultural, why was it not changed before?
A church is a permitted use within the agricultural zoning district.
Okay.
So it was, it complied to the agricultural zoning district. A church is also a permitted use in the C commercial, so we don't have any conflict with land use or the uses within those districts. It, it will allow them, the primary goal of the church is to allow themselves to have a little bit larger sign. Under the Ag District, they're limited to 16 square feet, which if you think about 16 square feet zipping along at 75 miles an hour, 70, you know, 16 square feet is basically four by four. This will allow them to go up to like 200 square feet of, of a signage, and that's ultimately the reason for their request.
Thank you, Scott.
Just as a point of information, those lots across the street are grandfathered in from some previous eon.
Thank you. Any other questions for Scott?
Scott, my background on the C, in the city has C1, 2, 3, 4, is, do we just have a C?
We have one C commercial district.
Okay.
And then we have, we do have I1 and I2, which is a light industrial and a heavy industrial. And so we do delineate the two of those, but for commercial, we just have C commercial.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the reading, first reading and the publishing the notice of the 2002 revised zoning ordinance for August 22nd at 5:00 p.m. And that's a joint meeting. Will that be held here, or?
Carnegie Town Hall, and I've provided all of the information to the city for them to put it on their agenda and alert the city clerk and what's needed there.
Make sure we send them to the right place. We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Item nine is petition for compromise. There aren't any today. We're to opportunities for public comment. If there's any item that's not on the agenda, we'd be happy to hear from you. We'd like to have you limit your comments to five minutes, if possible, and Mr. Colby.
Five minutes may be a squeeze. You know, after being on the county commission for a while, you, you develop a certain mindset, and I would imagine that anybody who's been in an elected position does the same, whether they're on the city or the state. And when you see what's happening here more recently with all of the government things, whether city, county, or, or state, or federal, it always appears that the state legislature has a contentious relationship with the county commissions, because they have removed like the personal property tax, I don't know what you would call it, the, in lieu of collecting the proper, personal property tax, they gave the counties money to replace that. They took it back, and for Minnehaha County, it was $500,000 back when, and that's a chunk of money even today. The state has limited the growth of property taxes by 3% or the inflation, whichever is the least. They've taken and capped the bank franchise tax. They've done the same thing in Deadwood with the Deadwood gambling money. They've capped that and taken money back away from Deadwood. Yet they still continue to give unfunded mandates. I remember in here, I was somewhat distressed when the state's attorney, Mr. McGowan, said that he would no longer prosecute bad checks. Okay, leave it at that. You watch the federal healthcare and how they can't seem to get their, find their butt with both hands in broad daylight on the Capitol steps. And yet, the Senate and the House have healthcare we all would relish for ourselves, and they won't even give that a consideration. Yeah, I just want the same penny of healthcare that John Thune and Mike Rounds have. It kind of reminds me of the line from Animal Farm. We're all created equal. It's just that some of us are more equal. So we watch the feds do that. We watch the, the states can't seem to find oversight to do, deal with EB5 or the Euro program. Let things happen. Who enforces the mandates that the state sends down to the county? The county graciously takes them and tries to support the effort financially without any kind of a financial background or financial support for that particular endeavor that the state gives to each of the counties. One of the things that I, the state legislators don't seem to understand that when the property tax is collected, 25% of the property tax is divided between the city and the county. The rest of it goes to the schools. And they don't understand that it takes three years of property taxes to support one year of education in the schools. You have to, if you're in an average home, you have to pay property taxes three years in order to support one year of education of your youngster in school. So if you have three kids, you'll never live long enough to pay for the education of your kids. Yet they cap the property taxes that the county has to collect, and that is reflected in what the county can do. Maybe it's time to say, no, we aren't going to do this anymore, and let the counties take, be taken to court by the legislature. And maybe the Supreme Court might say, you know, you just, you're responsible for taking care of the state, but you can't mandate something and not give support to it financially. I mean, it might be worth a try. It just might be worth a try, because, you know, the counties are the ones that are, seem to be the weak sister or the one at the end of the line, because other governmental entities seem to get the support that they need financially. I'm glad to see that you, that we are now getting the new structure out on, I don't know, is that North Kewanis or whatever it is for the, for the archives building? Bob Jamison and I started pushing for this. I think it's now just about 20 to 25 years ago, and I'd like to see it done before I tip over. I mean, we do need a place to archive all of the papers for the Commissioner Jeff Barth Life and Times, so push for it. I have a few things that might be? Barth, Life and Times, so push for it. I have a few things that might be worth putting in that particular structure. Thank you.
Thank you. And you are under five minutes. I'm pretty proud of you. Is there anyone else that would like to make any comments? Good morning.
Good morning. I'm supposed to have a PowerPoint loaded on here. There we go.
David, you need to give us your name and address.
Okay, sure. My name is David Sokitis. As you can see on the slides, and I live in Sioux Falls at two-two-one-five East Mawberry Street. And I'm campaigning for mayor of Sioux Falls. And I figure that, you know, when I am mayor, the city and the county will have to work together, and I don't want there to be a whole lot of surprises. So I'm presenting today on something that I feel is important to the city and the county, but it's a long discourse, so this is part one of three. Drug prohibition. Let's see if Paige Downe works on this. Now, in the popular press, it's popularly called the war on drugs, but I think that the term drug prohibition is more accurate and more scientific. And when you can switch from rhetoric to science, well, then you might actually be able to accomplish something. So in my presentation, I call this drug prohibition and not so much the war on drugs. Now, you know, I've got this long hair, and I'm talking about drug prohibition, so I want people to know that I'm an athletic, healthy, meditative guy, and I don't do any of this kind of garbage. I don't do drugs. I hardly ever take aspirin, so. And I do believe that we should have policies based on science and evidence and fact and not fear. Now, when you look at papers and news media, there's reports that, you know, drug abuse is growing. It's a terrible problem. It causes crime. Methamphetamine is supposed to be particularly nasty, and we really should try to figure out how much of this rhetoric is based on evidence and truth and reality. So I found some statistics from the U.S. Department of Health. And for the most part, drug use is stable or even declining. Little increase in meth use, but if you look at the number of illicit drug users, meth is just a very small part of that. So it's a big emotional issue, but not so much a big practical issue. Marijuana use is growing, and it's amazingly popular. Half of young adults have used marijuana. Half. This is from the U.S. Department of Health, by the way. A few more statistics. Oh, about one quarter of the population is binge alcohol users. That's rather alarming. Since we're talking about drugs, we should mention tobacco. About half, a quarter of the population uses tobacco. And if you want to figure out where I found this, there's a citation there. Here's a plot I found. Most drug use is stable or heading down, except for that top part. That's marijuana heading up a little bit. Methamphetamine use is not plotted because it's too small. It would fall off the chart. You wouldn't see it. Looks like drug use and abuse is all too popular. If half the young adults have used marijuana, we're not doing very well at keeping it off the streets. Apparently, jail-based prohibition doesn't prevent drug use or abuse. If you read the rhetoric about drug prohibition, we're trying to reduce addictions, we're trying to keep people safe. Hopefully, it's got a minimal social cost. But the question is, does it really work? Do we achieve the stated goals? And no, we don't. Marijuana use is large and growing. People that try to feed their habit go on crime spree and pay for this stuff. The third bullet is particularly alarming. We've got the world's second highest prison rate. That's just terrible. And then you've got problems with civil rights violations, with police that are kind of crazy. And if you look at what parts of society receive enforcement, biased heavily towards poor and black people. We're also subsidizing terrorism because opium out, guns in. Not what we want to do. Now, this is kind of a long discourse, and I only have five minutes at a time, so that's the end of part one. But I always end my presentations with a, you know, pretty picture, and no matter how bad things are, we should try to look on the sunny side and enjoy life. This is a view out my car as I was driving somewhere between Sioux Falls and Lake Madison. So with that, good morning.
Thank you, David. Is there anyone else who would like to make any comments on an item that's not on the agenda today? If not, we'll go to item number ten, and we'll have a briefing on activities and events of the two thousand and seventeen fair at the fairgrounds. Mr. Wick?
Good morning, Scott Wick, Sioux Empire Fair. Thank you for giving us some time this morning. First of all, on behalf of the board, staff, and myself, we want to thank you for your continued support. We've been working really hard to get up to this point this year for this fair. Weather's looking pretty good. I haven't seen any rain in the forecast, but it could change in ten minutes like it did that time when we had to postpone Lee Bryce. I have a packet with some VIP parking and admission passes for commissioners as well as staff, and I'll leave that with Carol. We have a really good lineup this year, a little more diversity than usual. One of the big names that's coming in is Fluffy the Comedian, and we're getting a lot of calls on him, probably more than any of the other entertainment. Unfortunately, it's been a news several times, that tragedy in Ohio, so we've had a couple of interviews with local stations on that. It always, it seems like the last three years, something's happened. So they've been out, and our rides are inspected. They were inspected last week when they were put together. They're inspected as they're put together here in Sioux Falls, and they're inspected every day throughout the fair. So we, you know, safety is the utmost priority. I do believe Carol passed on an email where I invited you all personally out to the fair to take a tour, hook you up with one of our board members and take you around the property when it's in its full use. We are the second largest event in the state, right behind Sturgis Bike Rally, and we intend on seeing up close to three hundred thousand people for this fair. So again, thank you for your continued support. The grounds are looking great. With Carnival arriving in the last couple of days, the new bathroom and comfort destination with the remodeled bathrooms, not only in the expo but up there on the midway, are very much appreciated, and things are looking good. And I would answer any questions if anybody has any questions about coming out.
Anyone have any questions? I hope you have dry weather, but I also hope it rains. So I don't know.
It's kind of tough in the interviews because we are an ag fair, so we want light showers at night and sunny skies during the day.
I hope you get what you're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that several of us have been involved in the fair over the years. And Scott, next week, I'm planning on wearing my Sioux Empire Fair shirt. I didn't today. I thought about it, but I thought next week, when the fair is ongoing, I would be wearing my Sioux Empire Fair t-shirt from eight years ago when I was on the board. But it's going to ruin my diet, but I plan to go out there. And they have really great milkshakes at that Pipestone Veterinary Building.
Good shakes and three dollars a day, all the milk you can drink.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any comments? Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Appreciate your hard work. Item eleven is a briefing from the Department of Legislative Audit on the two thousand and sixteen county audit. Mr. Schaefer, welcome back.
Thank you. Yes, good morning. My name is Jeff Schaefer. I'm with the Department of Legislative Audit. This is, like I say, an exit interview for the FY sixteen fiscal and compliance audit. And I think all of you have been supplied a management letter that will be the premise of our discussion today. I just thought I'd mention to you that if you have any questions at all concerning the audit at any time, please feel free. I'd like to just turn your attention to the second page, and this is going to be pretty uneventful, but there, if you looked in the center, there talks about the three different major areas, you know, for material or immaterial violations of laws or regulations or contracts and so on and so forth. And there are none noted, you'll notice, in all four areas. There were other, there were other less significant items that we discussed with the appropriate officials, you know, and potential adjustments and stuff like that. But other than that, I'm sorry, I don't take up much more of your time today, but if you have more questions, that's basically what I have, so.
Well, frankly, if you had a lot to tell us, we probably wouldn't be happy with what you told us.
Probably not, so.
Anybody have any questions for Jeff?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You know, first of all, thank you. And I have to say that at times I've been somewhat critical of our auditor, and this is, I think, the best report I've seen, actually, in some time. And thank you, Auditor Bob. That said, Jeff, can't we do it for a little less cost?
It is what it is. I don't have a whole lot of choice, a whole lot in the bill, but it is the number of hours it is, and the county, the size it is, and the things you have going on. It just takes a while to go down through it. So, but it should be better this year, but I haven't looked at the ending numbers yet, so. And I'm not the guy that sends that out, so.
Commissioner Hybarger?
Commissioner Barth thanked auditor Lutz, but I'd also remember the staff that's behind.
Oh, very much so.
There was a lot of work going into the audit and just the work that goes in that office, so.
Yeah, it was, it was a, a good experience the whole, all around this year. It was very good.
Anyone else have any comments? Again, thank you for your coming this morning and to the staff of the auditor. And we put them through the budget process, and then we give them the real good news with an audit report. So we do appreciate the support that you do give us and the times that we have to call and ask for questions on things that we're not completely sure of, of things that we're considering doing down the road, so.
You're welcome.
We appreciate that help also. Item twelve is to authorize the county sheriff's office to enter into an agreement with the airport authority to provide law enforcement officers at the airport terminal. You don't look like Captain Walsh. Good morning, Mr. Milstead.
I'll just introduce us. I do have Captain Mike Walsh here, who will oversee this operation from the patrol division. But I want to introduce this topic. On September eleventh, two thousand and one, the Minion County Sheriff's Office and Sioux Falls Police Department responded to the airport in an effort to start securing the airports as did law enforcement across America. And we were there for several months, sharing the duties with the Sioux Falls Police Department. And eventually, the police department entered into a contract to provide services at the airport for the certified law enforcement officer position that you see at the airport. They're there whenever there's flights coming and going from the airport to help secure the airport property. They're not the TSA-type screeners or the contract screeners. These are certified law enforcement officers working in that position. They've done that well for the last sixteen years. I've, you know, through a number of chiefs and had conversations with them over the years. In some jurisdictions, that, that job is performed by deputy sheriffs, and some it's performed by the municipal police agency. So it's different across America, but over the years, because those positions are staffed primarily with part-time staff, in fact, all part-time staff, it's becoming more difficult to find officers to work that position. A, the number of part-time officers available to the police department is limited. And B, the number of retired officers interested in putting back the uniform, putting the uniform back on and going back to work is, it's not as popular as it used to be. And so we've had discussions. This is not a hostile takeover. This is a great relationship I have with, with our police department and our regional airport authority. We've had discussions over the years at some point that maybe the sheriff's office could take that responsibility on. What it does for us is it opens up a greater pool of candidates to use as part-time staff. I can hire, if I provide the service out there, I can hire off-duty Sioux Falls police officers, of which there's about two hundred and fifty officers. So there's a bigger pool of candidates, of active officers. I could still hire retired officers from both of our departments. So it really is just a, I think the agreement is because, is coming in place because we recognize that the pool of candidates is bigger, and so we can keep good, qualified professional officers there. So nothing will change as far as the level of service. We are, we will be reimbursed by the regional airport authority. I've had a great conversation, and Dan Lettler is here from, from the regional airport. He's the executive director there. Chief Bernza and I have had these conversations. The mayor is aware of it, and, and this is something that we think will continue to provide top-level service for certified law enforcement presence at the airport, keep the airport safe. It'll be simply a changing of uniforms. We will have oversight over the officers. I'll have my patrol supervisor primarily responsible for them. One of the officers will be a supervisor that we're going to, to employ. We'll likely employ some of the current officers that are out there working right now. They'll go through an application with, process with us. Our costs will all be reimbursed, plus about five percent administrative fee to cover the auditor's office, the human resources, which, who has been very busy with us preparing the posting for those slots. And, and they're active with us today. They're, they're active and working with us, doing deputy sheriff interviews for other positions. So we work really closely with human services as well. So there's some other costs, but in reality, we think it's a good thing. We think we'll protect the airport and provide great service to the citizens, welcome the citizens to our community, and keep that, you know, Sioux Falls Regional Airport, the top-notch airport and the safe airport that it is. So with that, as I said, specifics of the contract, I have Captain Walsh here and also Dan Lettler from the regional airport authority, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mike. We appreciate Captain Walsh. If you'd like to give us some details, good morning.
Mike Walsh from the sheriff's office. As Sheriff Milstead said, we, we have worked out the contract with the, with the airport authority. And in a very broad sense, the sheriff covered most of that. If you have specific questions about that, as far as staffing or equipment or anything like that, I'm more than happy to answer it. The, the contract is modeled basically off of the Sioux Falls Police Department's contract. So again, it's another indication that things aren't really going to change out there. We're simply changing the uniform and changing to whom they report. As far as any other specific questions, I'm more than happy to answer any.
Anyone have any questions for Captain Walsh? Dan, do you have any comments?
No.
You'll probably have to come to the mic, sorry.
Dan Lettler, Executive Director of the Sioux Falls Regional Airport. No, we're, as Sheriff mentioned, we've had a great relationship with the city. You know, as times have changed and their pool of candidates they relied upon to fulfill this role was getting more challenging. Their cost structure was going to have to be adjusted as a result of that. And also, we're facing our own financial issues. We're, had up to this point been reimbursed for a majority of these costs through the TSA. Right now, that funding has not been renewed, so it's, you know, certainly for us to look, make sure that we're spending our money as wisely as we can. Sheriff Milstead and Captain Walsh have been great to work with. We think we'd have a great relationship to provide this important security aspect of the airport. So look forward to that relationship.
Appreciate that, Dan. Not having security issues is a good thing, and obviously, the quieter, the better. So we appreciate the services provided and sometimes take for granted. Anybody have any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the contract with the sheriff's office and the Sioux Falls Regional Airport Authority?
There is. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item thirteen is to consider a motion to approve the resolution to set speed limits on Highway one forty-five to sixty-five miles per hour. Morning, DJ.
Morning, Commissioners. DJ Booth, the highway superintendent. Have before you today a request or a discussion to have about setting a speed limit or passing a resolution to set a speed limit on County Highway one forty-five. This is also, I guess, used to be known as South Dakota Highway seventeen. As you know, we recently took over that three-mile stretch of state highway, and now it's a county highway. This stretch of road was reconstructed less than ten years ago with a design speed of between sixty-five miles per hour and seventy miles, or seventy miles per hour, and has been signed as a sixty-five mile-per-hour roadway. Sixty-five miles per hour is higher than any other speed limit that we have in our county. In fact, we have a resi- In fact, we have a resolution on the books that says any county highway, unless it's signed differently with a resolution accompanying that signage, will be at 55 miles per hour. And so, this is a little bit of a non-standard roadway section for us. Lincoln County went through the same process within the last two years, and they elected to keep it at 65 miles per hour after taking over from the state of South Dakota. And so, that's what we've prepared as a recommendation to the County Commission, is to keep it at 65 miles per hour, to keep that consistency within the corridor, and, and keep it familiar with how people are to driving that route. The way that it is designed, it feels comfortable at 65, and we think that if we did change it to 55, that there would be enforcement issue. And we haven't had any records of safety problems out there, and so we don't see it as a problem to moving it to 60, or keeping it at 65. But want to have that conversation and answer any questions that you guys might have, and I'm available for that now.
Any questions for DJ? Commissioner Karski?
So, it's currently signed at 65, correct?
Correct, yes.
And this goes right by Wild Water West?
Yes, it does.
Is that portion 65 also, right there?
It is 65, and, and because of the amount of turning traffic right there, they have installed turning lanes.
Okay.
And so, with the turning lanes in place, they were comfortable when they did that design to keep it at 65. That was one of the things that we looked at hard, too, was with the amount of turning traffic, should it be zoned at 55? And, and we're comfortable, after reviewing the DOT's design, that it can be 65.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve?
A motion.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the 65 mile-an-hour request. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 14 is to authorize the Chair to sign an agreement for preliminary engineering with Kimley Horn to evaluate and analyze the intersection Highway 140 and Highway 119, also known as the intersection of Rice, Holly, and Six Mile Road.
Commissioners, a couple of months ago, you, you heard a presentation from Phil Gunvaldson at IDG, or from IDG, about our intersection study that we recently completed. This intersection was one that was highlighted during the presentation as, as an intersection that met warrants for signals or something else. He also discussed the option of, of installing a roundabout. The current functioning of the intersection is poor, and, and we need to do something soon, so it doesn't continue to, to get worse, causing some major safety concerns. And so, we've, we've sourced an expert in traffic engineering and somebody that's done a lot of, it's a, it's a regional company, but they've done a lot of work locally with the City of Sioux Falls and the State of South Dakota. We've requested a proposal from them to look a lot closer. IDG looked at more of like a 30,000-foot level, but we want a company to look a lot closer at the options that we have for this intersection and, and do a little bit of preliminary design work. And then, we would like to follow up with this later this fall or winter, and do some design work for our construction project next year. And so, the agreement before you is a preliminary engineering agreement for them to look at, I think, three different options for this intersection, and then do a 30% preliminary design of the preferred option that we, that we agree on. And so, again, this intersection does meet warrants to do something soon, but we're not really sure exactly what we need to do, and so this preliminary engineering agreement will give us a good idea of how to proceed next year with a construction project.
Anyone have any questions on this project?
Mr. Chairman, this intersection really needs it. I'll make a motion to approve this contract.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the preliminary engineering contract with Kimley Horn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 15 is to authorize the Chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and the State of South Dakota Department of Transportation for bridge improvement grant funding for preliminary engineering for Project BRO 8050-17-1PCN06GY. Whatever all that means.
That's the state's nomenclature for our project. Commissioners, in, at the end of last year, we, we applied for a bridge improvement grant, and in April, we were notified that we did receive preliminary engineering grant for the replacement, or for the preliminary engineering of the replacement of this project. This bridge reconstruction is going to be real similar to a bridge that we did a few years ago with the same consultant on the same road, just a short distance down the road. The item before you today is a funding agreement, accepting those funds or accepting this project with the DOT, and it says in the memo that the grant amount is $42,600. That's what the state's portion will be. It's a 20% match, and so we'll pay $10,650 for, for the work to be completed. At the end of this agreement, we'll have type, size, and location study report completed. That will give us advice on how to proceed with the final design for replacement of the structure. We'll hope to do that this winter and move forward with the construction project in, in the next one to two years. So, with that, I request your approval of the funding agreement and have the Chairman sign the funding agreement with the DOT.
I'll make the motion, but I do have a question or two.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Barth.
So, DJ, I've been on that bridge. It doesn't look bad, but it's always nice to get big money, as in bridge improvement grant money. What's wrong with it?
Primarily the condition of the substructure and, and what we call the superstructure, which is all stuff that you can't see. It's underneath the deck. The hydraulics of this bridge do not perform especially well, and so, along with the replacement of the, of the structure, will be a significantly different channel that you see going through that, under that roadway. So, we look at all of our bridges and, and see what we think will compete best in the objective process that the DOT has for their, for their grant awards for this particular type of grant. And this one, by far, was, was the best one that we could put forward for receiving the funds, and, and we, we placed pretty low on the list, but we were at least on the list to receive the funds. If we turned around today and, and requested bridge construction funds with this bridge, we probably wouldn't get it. So, the process that they have is, is more like a three-year process with preliminary design, final design, and construction, and so perhaps in three years, it would, it would be able to compete a little bit better, but we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we, when we need to.
Don't ignore that. Commissioner. DJ, I know this is way before you, but, you know, I look at this road, and it seems like when whoever decided we should put a road here did it without a lot of foresight. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven bridges. I mean, and the average daily vehicles, 160 or something like that?
166.
Wouldn't it be better just to reconstruct the road and to follow the river instead of building all these bridges?
Commissioner, it's a township road, and, and I wasn't around when they established the section lines, and so I, I guess I don't care to comment on that one.
I know, but I'm just looking at the number of bridges there.
Point noted. Right, I agree.
I think we know your answer.
That being said, like I've told you before, in the bridge prioritization model that we use, we certainly look at an option of, of doing nothing or closing a structure when we're looking at replacing one, and this is definitely not one that we would consider closing.
Any other comments for DJ? We have a motion and a second to approve the signed agreement with the state for grant funding for the preliminary project. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Commissioners. Item 16 is to consider a motion to approve the proposed legislative resolutions for submission to the State Association of County Commissioners at four legislative acts. Craig Dewey, good morning, Craig. Your first big hill to climb.
Yes, good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. Before you, you have 10 different proposed legislative resolutions for the upcoming 2018 legislative session in Pierre. And it was a result of a lot of work between not only Minnehaha County and Lincoln County, but a number of other surrounding communities in the area. And I would defer to Commissioner Heiburger. She was part of those meetings to provide a little more background on the work that all of you put in to develop these priorities.
Okay, thank you, Craig. So, Rick Kylie chaired a group, and we met about 5 o'clock, probably, I'm guessing, five or six times, we met to discuss some of the issues that were on the table, or not on the table, and we brought to the table that would be beneficial to both municipalities and Minnehaha County. This is the first time we've done this. I think it was a great idea to get us off the table instead of working against each other to try to find legislative ideas together. We not only had Minnehaha County and several of our municipalities, we also had Lincoln County and the City of Worthing. Crooks, Del Rapids, Garrettson, and Hartford also joined us. So, we had mayors there and just talked about a lot of different issues that would affect us all together, and Craig has put together the resolutions for us, and I think he's going to read through those and kind of give us the background of what we've been talking about and stuff. It was really a good group, and it was, it's something that should have been, happened a long time ago, and I think we've always tried, but you have to start early, and this year we did. We finally started early, and it was a good group, so. Commissioner Bender also sat on there with me.
Thank you, Commissioner Heiburger.
Do you want to go ahead and read through those and give us a brief background or a brief, brief summary, or do you just want to go through them one by one and discuss and approve, or do you want to take them all as one large group?
I think we can take, I think you can take them all as one large group. I don't think that anything is controversial. These are all issues we've talked about here, and are pretty much, and so I think, I think it's a good group of things, and maybe Craig can just read through them, and...
The only thing that I would maybe ask Craig, if you'd take just a second and talk about the TIFs, because I think that needs a little more explanation. We continually talk about that, but there's some details with this conversation, I think, about what is going to be supported or hopefully supported, so do you want to just briefly talk about that one?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. As a point of clarification, would you like me to address the substance of what is in the TIF resolution?
Please.
I think you can still go down through all of them, though, Craig. At least read through, you know, read through what they are.
Sure. All right, as a preface to the conversation, there are 10 different resolutions being proposed, including resolutions on emergency radio systems, 911 surcharges, alternative publication options, workforce housing, local option gross receipts tax on alcoholic beverages, resolution regarding tax increment financing, also known as TIFs, citizen board compensation, drug and alcohol education intervention and treatment programs, county and municipal cooperation, and a resolution regarding a failure to appear for a property tax, or property valuation appeal, rather. Starting out with the resolution on the TIFs, as you requested, Mr. Chairman, there are some proposed resolutions to tax increment financing regulations here in South Dakota, and as a result of some issues that arose of alleged abuse, the entire application process is being proposed to be revised by the State of South Dakota, and as a result of those changes in the proposed regulations regarding that, there would be a local control that would be removed from any local municipality, local county in that process, and that would certainly impact the ability of Minnehaha County to determine what TIFs may be most appropriate and best suited for the land that we have here in Minnehaha County.
I think the key to that conversation that most of us realize, because we've been through this rodeo before, is the whole issue of the percentages of TIFs that are property tax abatements for a while, if you will, and how that works in the future, and if the property would be improved without a TIF. And I think there's been conversations for quite a while about that application process, and I believe that this is a good conversation for us to have in a public forum. Not necessarily has to be today, but it does need to be a conversation that the city and the counties and the state need to agree on, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first resolution...
Sorry, anybody else? I didn't mean to butt in on that one. Go ahead, sorry.
Thank you, not a problem. The first resolution that we'll be covering is upgrading to a reliable statewide emergency radio system, known as Project 25, also called and referred to as P25, moving forward in this resolution. Statewide emergency radio systems are used in any time of crisis across the state. This resolution would simply call the state to fund upgrading the current system to the system that is currently in use by the federal government, using the national standard that is in place. So, it would bring local and statewide emergency communication systems in line with what the federal government is using for next-generation technology. The second resolution regards 911 surcharge sunset and inflationary increases for the 911 surcharge. There is a sunset clause that exists on the 911 surcharge, and also another factor to consider with wireless devices is that every wireless device, no matter if it is a post-paid plan, or if it is a pay-as-you-go plan, or a burner phone, has to provide 911 emergency access. And this resolution simply calls for repeal of the sunset clause, as well as requiring all telecom companies to collect and remit the 911 surcharge for all of their devices. And the reason why this resolution calls for both of those is simply to more accurately reflect the cost of providing 911 services as they exist, and one factor in that is certainly, 911 surcharge was created in 1989. As we know, as time passes, inflation does impact purchasing power, and so purchasing power has changed over the years, and allowing for removing that sunset clause would allow, as the years go by and inflation does take hold, to ensure that the county would have accurate and up-to-date 911 service response technology in time. The third resolution that is proposed regards alternative publication options for local government. Publication notices are required by state law for, by open meetings laws in regards to a number of different things, such as public meeting agendas, bids, requests for proposals, name changes, and other legal changes. And that print advertising does require a significant expense by the county, particularly in counties that have multiple publications that cover the area. And so, this resolution would support an effort to allow local governments to save taxpayer dollars and explore alternative publication options that would also entail reflecting the near-universal access that citizens have to the internet to be able to look up those different required publications. The next resolution is about expanding workforce housing opportunities. As we know, the housing market is certainly hot here in the local Sioux Falls area, and as we try and continue to, continue growth in the county, and as businesses are looking to expand, an adequate supply of workforce housing does help ensure that businesses are able to attract and retain local workers. Affordable housing can encompass a variety of different types of dwellings, including single-family, as well as neighborhood revitalization and homebuyer assistance programs. And this resolution supports expanding workforce housing opportunities, and another benefit of adequate workforce housing is that it would also help reduce crime and combat neighborhood blight that exists and may, in fact, prevent that before it does take hold. The next resolution for your consideration is a local option gross receipts tax on alcoholic beverages. As we know, alcohol is a significant driver in law enforcement costs and other public costs regarding public services that are provided both to counties as well as municipalities, who are required to fund local law enforcement. And allowing a local option gross receipts tax would allow each local entity across the state to best determine if law enforcement costs are increasing due to alcohol consumption, these localities can then determine if they would like to increase the tax, gross receipts tax, on alcoholic beverages. The next proposal, which we initially highlighted, regarding sustaining tax increment financing while maintaining integrity of the process. And again, going back to the background that was provided to you at the beginning of going through these resolutions, tax increment, tax increment financing has led to millions of dollars of increased property tax values and increased property values for municipalities and counties across the state. And local control certainly plays a very important role in that process. And there are some proposed changes coming from the state regarding how the TIF application process would move forward. As a result of some of those proposed changes, if they would be enacted, it would result in reducing the amount of local control and input that could be provided regarding TIFs. And as is tradition across South Dakota in a number of different areas... tradition across South Dakota, in a number of different areas, certainly local control plays an important role in this process. This resolution would support maintaining local control, but still allow and encourage the case-by-case enforcement if there is an alleged abuse in the TIF process. The next resolution for your consideration is regarding local government flexibility for appointed citizen boards, committees, and commission compensation. And certainly you know that citizen input is required for different external boards and commissions. A couple of examples would be the abandoned cemeteries commission, as well as the housing and redevelopment commission. And compensation for individuals serving on these external entities is set by state law. Currently, some local boards and commissions are finding difficulties in recruiting as well as retaining qualified individuals. And this has to do with some considerations that you may not, may not have heard, you may have heard before. Travel time is certainly an issue in an evening. If you have multiple children, childcare expenses have increased over time. And that is result, resulted in people just not being able to fit it into their finances and time schedules. And if local, local option or flexibility would be allowed in determining the compensation, it would provide access to more qualified, better qualified individuals to continue serving on these external boards, committees, and commissions. The next resolution for your consideration is supporting funding for drug and alcohol education, intervention, and treatment programs. And as was previously discussed about the local option gross receipts tax on alcoholic beverages, we know that drug and alcohol abuse can cause not only increased crime rates, but there are other negative societal impacts and an increase in utilization of different social services, including human services provided by Minnehaha County. And the group believed that amending law and appropriating funding for education intervention and treatment programs would not only help deter drug and alcohol abuse from occurring, but it would also help mitigate some of those impacts that happen to Minnehaha County in that process and ultimately result in a saving of taxpayer dollars. We're getting to the end here. This is number nine. Protecting and encouraging cooperation between cooperative activities between county and municipal governments. This would be one example, Commissioner Hiberger, that you worked on, where there is a tangible result of cooperation between local county and municipal governments, of producing resolutions that can be supported by a broader voice. There are also other intangible benefits, such as developing the relationships for future action on larger issues as well. And what this resolution would accomplish is allowing municipalities and counties the option to explore avenues of collaboration. It would not mandate it, but it would allow the option, should the county determine that such collaboration and cooperation would be beneficial. The last resolution for your consideration would be to establish fees for failing to appear for property tax, property valuation appeals. The way the process works for property valuation appeal is that once an appeal is filed, there is a hearing that gets scheduled in peer that requires time and travel for assessors from equalization. Not only time, but there's money in gas, other employee expenses, given the trip to peer and back over a day does require meals and so forth. And so what this resolution would do is if someone would appeal a valuation but fail to appear, the county would assess a $250 fine per appeal to help cover and mitigate some of the costs required for this travel. This wraps up the proposed resolutions. As a matter of process, I would indicate to you as well that last week there was a discussion about pursuing some sort of action regarding billing for healthcare costs. And after further investigation into that subject, it was discovered that the State Association of Welfare Directors has been looking into the issue over a longer period of time. And it's believed that they're preparing some action that would be pursued next year. So that is why you don't see a resolution or further discussion of this issue at the time. And then lastly, as far as a matter of process, should you adopt these proposed resolutions, what will happen is that these will be sent to the committee with the State Association of County Commissioners for a view as a statewide body and then a vote and approval for presenting them at the 2018 legislative session coming up here in South Dakota. Would be available for any further clarifications or questions that you might have regarding the process or any of the individual resolutions.
Thank you, Craig. I appreciate your time and efforts in this. It's, I think it's a good process for us to go to, as a cooperative group, to bring some of these items to the association and hopefully bring some more strength, if you will, and success in getting some of these things passed. Anybody have any questions for Craig? Commissioner Barth?
Craig, you know, you referenced the medical stuff. You know, one of the things that we've had happen is that bills from years ago suddenly appear. Is that one of the things that the statewide organization is discussing? Do you know?
I'm not privy to the entire discussion that they've had, but the, the conversation that's being explored revolves around that issue of when bills have come compared to the dates when service was provided.
And, Mr. Chairman, I know that this isn't on the list, but one of the things that I wonder if we should consider the option of cremation only again as something we would want to bring to the legislature, cremation only for the indigent, which would save us some monies and save some pain for the mortuary people too. Anyway, I just want to throw that out. Any other comments?
I agree that there's a benefit to the county of doing that. I guess my concern is, is the more things that we bring to the association, the more watered down it gets and the more difficult it will be to get 10 things proposed. The list is long and I think it'll provide some challenges, but I do think the, the 10 that have been worked out through the committee process is probably what we should look at this year and then add those to it next year. One of the priorities that we have to deal with is the fact that we know we won't get all 10 of these in the system. And let's go with, let's go with bulk that we've already talked about.
You are wise. Probably only two of these will get through anyway, but thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I think we'd like to have a motion to approve those proposed resolutions.
Motion to approve.
Second, with a question?
Sure.
So this will come back to us as our finished legislative priority sometime in October, November? Or is this the final?
This is the final. It goes to the committee convention, if you will, in September. And then the association will approve how many? We're not totally sure of. And then they will bring that to the next step. Commissioner Hiberger?
One of my liaison reports was going to be in authority. Now is that the South Dakota Association of County Commission Board of Board Meeting is in Chamberlain, August 9th and 10th, and I will be attending that. And so I'll be taking those resolutions there and they will be discussed there as far as what's going forward. So that's the next step. And then it goes to the convention in September.
The long process.
Yep, yep.
Got it. And we have two representatives, correct, from the area? Yourself and the district?
At Lincoln County. I think Jim Schmidt might be on there.
I think he's the East River representative.
The district one is from Tonah.
Oh, that could be. Maybe Jim was replaced. That's right. I think you're right.
Be interesting to know. Can we get that list of people? So maybe we should drop them a note of encouragement on whatever you want to choose. So do we have a motion and a second then to bring these to the group discussion, board meeting, I guess, on the 8th and 9th?
9th and 10th. 9th and 10th and there is a motion.
Okay. A motion and a second to approve the legislative resolutions for submission. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you for your help. We appreciate your input.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Item 17, our liaison reports. Anyone have a liaison report?
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to just discuss for a moment the, our, our ordinance that we're going to be working on next week. A couple of things. One is that I've already been getting contacts from people about the planning ordinance changes. And, and I would also say that people are telling me that they've not been informed and we're doing this all in the dead of night. The Planning Commission has met for eight months on this. It's been on our agenda every time and nobody has attended. I guess the Lincoln County Planning Director came. The, the newspaper gives us zero coverage. The article that was in the paper yesterday was a result of me calling the reporter and telling him to please write an article. Two weeks ago, when we approved the, the hearing for the 8th of August, we, with an Argus reporter in the room, which we rarely have anymore, we looked directly at him and said, "We need this to get out to the people," and nothing happened. The newspaper is not doing its job. And we talk about publications. Apparently, nobody looks on the internet. Nobody looks on, on any of these things. It's totally ineffective publishing it in the newspaper. Nobody's looking. And the newspaper isn't even, isn't covering it either. I'm not sure what else we can do. If I punch Cindy, how would anyone know? Well, besides you people, I'd have to kill you all. But we need, we need the newspapers to step up to the plate, do their job for our community because we can do our job, but if we're functioning in, in a vacuum where this awareness cannot come out, it's, it's ineffective. But going back to the hearing next week, if we make any, any changes in the, in the ordinance on the fly, I would hope that we would take a moment and allow our legal counsel and the planning department to review anything before we make a change on the fly and then approve it. In other words, if we decide to move a new paragraph in or out, that we make sure that it's not going to have unintended consequences. And so I would urge us, if next week, with the public input that I fully expect, that we allow the planning department and our, our legal counsel to review any changes before we carve it in stone. Additionally, you know, our overflow room next week is not going to be available. It's going to be SRO. Maybe we should charge for tickets. Anyway, invited Scott down if he has any other comment as far as the process next week, because I expect it to be, not necessarily contentious, but I expect us to be full of it.
Once again, Scott Anderson, County Planning. And I have been in discussion with several people that have called me, emailed me. I know that the ag community ha, is aware of this, and I think we will see several ag producers here. They have expressed interest in attending. And I have seen the emails. Jeff forwarded me a couple of emails that he received. And to the point of how you get notice out to people, it's, it's very difficult. I mean, it, we, we do, we do everything we can. Commissioner Barth is correct. We've been working on this for eight to nine months at the Planning Commission. And so it wasn't something that we just quickly devised and threw together. I mean, there's been a lot of thoughtful input and consideration by staff, legal counsel, planning commission, other producers. And, you know, I think we just need to remember that we have a current CAFO ag ordinance. And so if nothing changes, we, we, we still have that. And I, I like to take the approach when I tell people, we're really trying to make some minor improvements, minor changes that will hopefully improve the potential for ag to thrive in the county. And we are an agricultural county. So that's really all.
Commissioner Karski?
Commissioner Barth brought up a point. I'm just trying to remember. I know procedurally, and this goes back a couple of years, if there are any changes to the proposed amendments, can we approve them? Or do they have to get remitted back to the Planning Commission?
We can approve those, but we can also, if we have concerns from a legal standpoint, we can remand those back. So we have that option available to us.
Okay. It's not, not required that we send it back, but it's an option for us to do. Okay?
Correct. Legal counsel?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Hiberger?
Just one comment to Jeff's comment about the Argus leader or the papers. It's just that people have to read them too. Even when they are published, people don't always pick it up and read it. So it kind of goes all the way around.
Any other liaison reports?
I have quite a few. You want to go ahead?
Go ahead.
Okay, I got one. Last week, I spent Tuesday and the better part of Wednesday in a sequential intercept mapping training, put on part of the triage project. Very intense two days, a lot of people at the table. One thing to, you know, consider, I guess, that I just want to share with you, people, the general population that has mental health issues is somewhere between 3% and 4% of the population, but typically 16% to 18% of the jail population. So the whole purpose of what this whole triage and sequential intercept mapping is to basically divert people from jail. And then the question becomes divert them to where? And what we've done over those two days is basically attempt to set out a roadmap of where we're going to go with what we know, with all the resources we have available to us in the county from, you know, either community health, public health, all the different people that come into mind when we talk about if someone is having a mental health issue, who's the first, where is the first place called? It's the police are involved. And that's not typically what we want because it's just not the appropriate way to deal with that type of issue. So you'll see more and more and hear more and more about this. And I know I probably, I'm sure Aaron's back there listening saying, "No, no, no." But I think I've got the gist of everything that happened and that we went over. It, it was a lot of information and way over my head when it comes to the, you know, the problems that we deal with. But as a policymaker, I was able to sit in on that and try to learn as much as I can to share it with you and others. And hopefully I hit most of it and we can move on and get this project really, get the rubber on the road there. So, thank you.
Commissioner Hiberger?
I have several because I've been missing the last couple of weeks at the board meetings. So last, two weeks ago, I was in peer for the criminal justice response for people with mental illness. I sit on that board now. Mike Milstead also is on that and Mike Miller. And so that, the meeting last, or two weeks ago, was to bring the new committee together to decide what we were going, or how we were going to handle the bill that was passed in the legislature. We elected a chair, which is Craig Zadizan from the UJS. And the vice chairs is a co-chair position between Amy Iverson Polryeys and Mike Miller from Minnehaha County. At this point, they're going to be starting to set up work groups. We will have several subgroups to look at different divisions of what that bill was putting forward to happen. And this is kind of the oversight council that will be looking at it. Those individual subgroups will have a lot of community people put on those subgroups to do the work because we have a huge board in peer, but that's not going to be enough people to handle the amount of work I think that's going to go into this bill. They already have six jails that have volunteered for the mental illness screening that's going to be done pending to Minnehaha. Hughes, Falk, Charles Mixon, Cottington have already stepped forward and said they would do the pilot on that screening when that screening is approved. We also have Bob Wilcox there who talked. He's the State Association person that we have. And he was there and talked about the reimbursement that the counties will get for mental health screening. Obviously, I brought up that bill this morning on mental health evaluations. And we, the money that the state is going to reimburse us will be a small, will be one portion of different types of evaluations that we do. There's been a cap set on how much they'll reimburse the states, or reimburse the counties. There's an application process. The South Dakota Association of County Commissioners will be administering those funds. And so the first years, you know, we've got, with a lawyer, they've worked out the details of that. And I think that Carol forwarded you all those documents on that. But Bob came and talked about how that was going to go down. So that was very good. So that was two weeks ago. And then this past week, I was in, in Ohio with Carol and Aaron Surtzka was there for a short time for the NACO National Association of Counties Convention. And I sit on the Justice and Safety Board. So we meet ahead of time and discuss resolutions and stuff that are taken to Washington and proposed as a group of proposed as a group of counties. And I'm just going to, there were a lot we discussed. There was two days of meetings for that committee that I sit on, but I'm just going to read off the list of the resolutions that I put my support behind as a board member that sits on that committee. One was promoting parity in the health information to facilitate diversion of people with substance disorders and mental illness from jails to treatment. Equity in Medicare coverage for pretrial inmates. FEMA, we had a FEMA resolution to modify the individual assistance criteria to ensure that rural residents are treated in a fair and equitable manner. We asked for reauthorization of the Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention Act, JJDPA. There was another one that was urging Congress to provide full funding for Mental Illness Offender Treatment and Crime Reduction Act. And then a resolution, a resolution on improving pretrial justice. Pretrial justice continues to be one of the main topics at NACO. Some of the, a couple of the different breakout sessions I went to when the convention started, because the convention didn't start until Saturday afternoon, Saturday afternoon or Sunday afternoon, Sunday afternoon? I can't even remember. But a couple of the breakout sessions I went, one was Fundamentals of Pretrial. That was recorded. It will be on the NACO website when they get it posted. I would assume in a couple of weeks, they'll have all the different ones that, breakout sessions available will be available, so you can listen to them. They're about an hour long. The Fundamentals of Pretrial talked a lot about the PSA. They have three different states that are now using the PSA and the benefits that they have had. They talked about management shouldn't be based on, should not be based on a charge, but it should be based on the risk that the person is. Research in one of the counties that spoke said that if you take a bond and you add the money, and then you figure out what the release is from that, you can figure about twelve days in jail, at least in their system. They have found that by doing a risk assessment and having a judicial review with tailored responses, they're keeping those people about two days. And so just to try, they've talked about huge reductions that they've had in their jail population by moving towards the, the public safety assessment, which our county is working on. And I just urge you to, to consider listening to some of those broadcasts, or that'll be on the NACO website. Another one that I listened to was Aligning Justice, or Aligning Justice and Health Resources to Achieve Better Outcomes. And I think that's probably the end of what I had to say.
Thank you.
Question?
Yep.
Cindy, would that bill that we referenced earlier be the type of bill reimbursed by the state, then, for psychological assessment?
I don't know if that particular one meets the criteria. I don't think it does. That particular one would not meet the criteria for what we'll be reimbursing. There's, like I said, there's three different avenues of psych evaluations, and we're doing a specific one, and I don't think that that, because that was why I contacted Tracy yesterday. I don't think that has anything to do with it.
Thank you.
Any new business?
I have another one. I was contacted by Sue Quanbeck yesterday, and the city was requesting input for a new street signage along Dakota Avenue. They are going to, they've hired Fresh Produce to do placement and verbiage of new signs. They'll be putting a sign up by the new administration building and a couple of other buildings, and they would like some input from the county. They asked me if I wanted to sit in on that, and if there was anyone else. So I have forwarded the letter to Carol, and I'll have to get back to Sue soon, so if it's something you want to be on, or if there's someone that you think would be better suited than myself to sit on that, we can obviously take more than one person. So just a heads up, and can talk with Carol about it, so. They said that they would be, probably, they'd be putting signage up for the county administration building, but possibly the health and the multicultural center, too, so. Just letting you know.
I think that can be handled by staff in those conversations. I don't think that we have to have commissioners come to that. At least, that's my opinion.
Might be our facility manager that should attend.
Yep. Any other new business? Any old business?
Just for the good of the cause, go to the fair. What do you say?
Will do. Like a motion to adjourn into executive session for personnel contracts and litigation?
That's my motion.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes, and we will be back in about ten minutes. One.